Good afternoon. This confirmation and public hearing conducted by the Committee on General Governmental Operations and Cultural Affairs will not come to order. Notice that this confirmation hearing and public hearing on Bill 292 was disseminated to all local media, held its by electronic format on April the sixteenth with a second notice provided on April the twenty-first. Notice the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature website. We have two items on today's agenda. One, the executive appointment of Michelle H. Titon to serve as a member of the Guam Parole Board. And Bill 292, an act add a new subsection forty-one zero four point two to section forty-one zero four of chapter four, title for Guam Code Annotated, relative to proof of eligibility for veterans' preference credits. Well, if it's okay, we'll take Bill 292 first, and that should last us all about two minutes. I'll ask the chairman to, I mean, the main sponsor to please make an opening statement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Speaker, for having this particular public hearing. Just to provide a little bit of history, this is an issue that was brought to the attention of my office not too long ago in regards to the requirement or the definition of veterans' preference and how it's applied to the government of Guam workforce. Apparently, in the GARR, which is the Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, it reads, "A person must have completed at least one hundred and eighty consecutive days of service in the armed forces." And because in many instances, even in today's world, with the military, whether they be in the guard or the reserve component, they're given assignments or exercises or training where, in fact, they serve less than a hundred and eighty days. So in terms of eighty, less than a hundred and eighty consecutive days. So in terms of meeting the spirit of the original proposal and how it's applied, now the word will be changed rather than consecutive, it would read cumulative. So we would retain the spirit of the original legislation that is presently in effect, but allow for the additive nature of at least a minimum of a hundred and eighty days, but not necessarily on consecutive assignments. So, Mr. Vice Speaker, this was brought to our attention by an individual who apparently is in the reserve component, and as we speak, he just sent an email message early this morning that he is presently off island on a training exercise. So I've asked him to submit written testimony subsequent to this particular hearing, but I want to thank him personally for bringing this to our attention because, obviously, based on the explanation that I provided, that that's the justification for this. So I ask yourself, Mr. Chairman, and our colleagues to give it serious consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Ragan. Just for the public's information, the committee will continue to receive testimony over the next two weeks. You can send it to senator@senatorbjcruz.com, or you can send it to one fifty-five Hessler Street in care of the office of Senator Benjamin Cruz. We'll consider this bill heard, and I'm hoping that at some point we'll get some kind of clarification about a hundred and eighty cumulative within a time period, or cumulative over thirty years.
What it is, Mr. Speaker, what it is, is cumulative, which is additive in nature. So if you add, let's say someone is assigned on an exercise for sixty days, and that is not assigned for another exercise for another four or five months, but then it's assigned for thirty days, so it's additive in nature. So it's cumulative total of a minimum of a hundred and eighty days, and then they're eligible for their preference.
Okay. Guess we'll have to discuss this in committee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The committee will consider Bill 292 dash thirty-two as having been heard, and again, the public is welcome to submit written testimony via electronic mail, or by postal service, or you can just drop it off at our office. The second item that we have on the agenda is the confirmation of Michelle Hope Titon to the Guam Parole Board. And I want to first publicly apologize to Ms. Titon. I didn't mean to skip a month and not have your hearing. I didn't realize that it was in our hopper, and then when I was told, we immediately scheduled it. But I was, I didn't realize that you didn't have enough people until I saw that there was a nonquorum about a week ago, and I thought, "How can that be?" I thought we were fully staffed, and then when I looked, I realized that we had a problem. So the committee would like to, at this point, begin the confirmation. I believe we have two board members, two mayors, I believe. I mean, how much more recommendation could you get than two mayors, a current and a former mayor? So Mayor Vlos and Mayor Duñez, you're both asked to come forward if you wish to provide testimony? Mayor Duñez, since you were the first to sign up, we'll hear your testimony first. And make sure the red light's on, please.
Hi. Jake, ready?
Good, please, yes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chairman and all the members, I'm here in support of Michelle Titon for her confirmation to continue being a parole board. He's a chairman, and she's a chairman at this time, and I'm sure we lost Margaret, but she climbed into the Ascent Hill, and she got it, made down the best. So congratulations, Margaret. Michelle has been serving for the parole board for the last four years, maybe more. But he is not only serving in the board, on the table, as we call, he go beyond helping the parolee, because our men go when we parole someone to be successful. So she organized the Aqaham aftercare, and she gather these people with their family. And every Sunday afternoon, she will meet down in the open pavilion in the governance ground, governance office compound ground, and share their thoughts, their suffering, and whatever their parolee are going through. But in the end of those, they're helping one another find a job and go to revenue and tax and get their license renewed after Guam Mighty Guard plus helping one another try to get a job. And Michelle is on top of this one, and she's very successful on doing this. And on Easter and Christmas, we gather these people, and we go, and we have our either luncheon or evening out with the parolee and their family. And I admire Michelle doing all these things, because she have all the time enough to do this, and she's very successful in doing it. I wish I'll be, I can be able to help her, but I do not drive anymore, but I'm behind her, hundred and plus percent. And so far, our parolee are very successful. What I do not like about parolee and not being supported by DOC, when we try to help our parolee, especially the staff that is with us, when we try to help them, you know, do something good for themselves, then they were a monies for it. And that, you know, I do not see it as fair, and it is not right. So I hope, you know, that when we do something for the parolee or the staff there, something good, you know, for the parolee and their family, and then DOC staff, I mean, the whole staff, starting from the director, will support that and try to help make it more convenient, more wonderful, and more pleasant for the parolee and for that person that is helping their parolee. And because of all of this, it's because of Michelle Titon. That's all what I can say, Chairman, and Ms. Eileen, that put Michelle back to work. We need a quorum, and we hope somebody will step up like last month. Again, we were on the paper that we do not have quorum, we not have hearing, because we do not have quorum, because I make that not having a quorum, because I left the island to attend to my granddaughter, or my granddaughter's birthday, first birthday. So it's very important for me. Parole is very important, but family come first, and so is my great-great-granddaughter. So if all this said, you know, I hope that Michelle will be on your next agenda to confirm her to go back to work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I really, on behalf of at least myself, and I'm sure my colleagues, we want to thank you for the service that you provide, the parole board. It's been many years that you've served on there, and though you say that you wish that you could help Michelle more, you are doing a lot for Michelle and the parole board by being willing to continue to stay on the board in spite of all the other problems that you may be having. And so I'm sure she appreciates your presence and your willingness to continue to serve, and we are very grateful and thankful that you are willing to continue to serve, where you've served many, many years and have a right to be able to retire. But your commitment to service is recognized by this legislature, and we want to thank you for your continued service to the parole board, and thank you for your testimony today, okay? Mayor?
Buenos, Mr. Speaker, Senator Frank Ragan, Senator Tomara, Senator Chris Duñez, and Senator Eileen Yamashida. I am here today to testify in support of Ms. Michelle Hope Titon for this position as parole officer for the past six years that she has been there. I served with her for two years, and she has gone way over, like Ms., I concur with us, Mayor Tony Duñez, she's gone over hundred and plus percent over her responsibilities, as chair. She has put over two days of work with us to try and meet up the deadlines to serve those parolees, to get them on the list and move on. We dare not, there's no stipend, and they work diligently. And she also tries to work with them after hours, as she stated. Michelle, I can't say that, you know, she's going to be a big loss if she's not there. And I hope, and I ask you, to please look far beyond Michelle and also the requirements of becoming a parole board member, because there is some stipulations there that forbids us to continue on. When we are there to serve, even without compensation, look into this law. And I know that it states that, you know, I had to step down when elected, but if I could, I would continue to serve with her, because she has been a great leader, not only to the community, but also to those parolees that are trying to make life after being in there. You know, it is hard. We also have worked on together to try and to put a close, you know, ending the, I guess, the two parties together, to get them together. She has done a great deal on that, having them speak up, and at the end, hold hands as they walk out the door. So please, I ask you to please look into Michelle's reconfirmation and also the law that requires the board members to get in there. Dankolins de los mazos, and I wish her and everybody here the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Are you referring to, is there, there's a provision in the statute that says an elected official cannot serve?
Yes, there is.
And so that's what you're trying to...
That's why I had to step down, because as an elected official, I cannot serve. But I'm willing to get back in there with Michelle. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for the service that you rendered to the parole board and now to your village. I'm not sure how you would have been able to juggle all that if you had stayed on, but I'm, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Hafaday, Vice Speaker, BJ, Senator Frank, Senator Tom, Chris, and Eileen. Dankolins de los mazos for the opportunity again to come before you and share that I would like to continue to serve on the Guam Parole Board. Thanks also go to our governor to have the confidence to reappoint myself in this capacity as member. And I just wanted to share that the ladies have been talking about a program that I actually did spearhead about six years ago in interviewing some of the parolees as they were first let out. They were back shortly, and I asked, "Why are you here?" And I said, "Ma'am, I can't get a job." "Why can't you get a job?" "I don't have high school or training," and all the other myriad of challenges that parolees have coming from broken homes, fatherless, or absent fathers. So all their challenges, and in that, I continue to see the lack at the time, and we continue to still have within the Department of Corrections, unfortunately, the lack of funding and resources to be able to really put an aftercare program in place. I think at one time we used to have it, but I think things changed, so anyway. In that, I started to network with people, well, of course, with the blessing of the Guam Parole Board members at the time. I did get their blessing, told them that I said, "You know, we need to help these guys. We are in support of them. When we grant parole, we want them to be successful." So in that, I received the blessing, went forward and further networked with Department of Labor, AHRD, the private sector, both nonprofit and for-profit, to be able to either provide training. We had, we were working with the Micarneesian Business Association, and then to Ihome to teach these guys basic computer skills and workplace readiness skills. And we had that program, or we partnered with them for about three years, and that program ceased to exist, or they didn't get that grant funding. So we just teach, when we meet on Saturdays, we do teach those of us who come together. Again, it's free, it's volunteers in the community, it is faith-based, and we do incorporate those teachings and apply them into our lives and our work skills, and just try to get them, get the parolees and/or their families, because their families are invited to attend Saturdays when they meet for their aftercare. They do get assigned to the Guam Aftercare if they do not have a job, and the goal is, of course, to get job placement, hopefully, and/or training, whichever, sometimes they happen at the same time. So that's our goal, is to get them, get them sustainable themselves first, get them working, and then definitely try to work at getting them to finish high school. Yeah, between the eighth and the tenth grade is when they kind of lose it, especially if they don't have that father or coach or uncle to come alongside to say, "Hey, this is what you need to do. Let's keep focused on your education." So they lack that. So anyway, so now we have to deal with that as, you know, as they're adults. So in that, so we were meeting at Atalou. Thank you to Governors Felix and Eddie for allowing us to just meet in the backstage, and we would set up lights, and we would hold our classes there from about six to eight thirty. And we've been recently blessed with Mr. Joe Nalta. He's currently the pastor for Calvary Chapel Guam, and he actually learned about our program, came down and visited, and actually spoke to the guys, and he has a really, a real good heart and sees the program, sees the mission, and really supports it. So he kind of gave us the key to be able to use his facility most Saturdays. So now we have full facility, in that we're able to be able to actually teach computer classes, which are forthcoming, teach it under our roof now instead of partner with other folks. So we're able to do that amongst other things, and then we have a full kitchen, bathroom facilities, so it's very nice. And the guys say, "Oh, miss, no mosquitoes." You know, they're very gracious, because we, you know, it's just outdoor covering, right? But we were still able to be protected and had what little, this is what we do and we don't have. We improvise, and we make things happen to the best of our abilities. So that's what the ladies were talking about. When we grant, we want them to be successful, and we try to help them at whatever level we can, as they've shared. So our other challenge currently is parole services continues to be at the DOC, and it's really hard for the parolees because we do, because of them coming back to the Department of Corrections. The department now has higher incidences of contraband and other incidences that are somewhat related to the parolees being brought back into DOC. Unfortunately, and currently, my current concern, which I have yet to address with the director, is the fact that since sixty people were found to be positive for TB, I believe, I'm concerned, because now, because of the parolees, two hundred and forty are out in our community, I'm gonna, my goal is to request for the director to, let's have these guys and ourselves tested, so that we can make sure that we're safe, because our deal and treat if they are positive, and go with that. That's a really big issue, and that's the biggest challenge to date, other than the other challenges of parole services being on the campus of the Department of Corrections. And I've tried time and time again, we've tried to network, we've worked with everybody, nonprofit, for-profit, with the government, to try to see if we can get a place to have for the parole services to be able to operate on a daily basis, because sometimes they're twenty-four hours. So they need a place neutral, so that they can have their own housing outside, as well as the Guam Parole Board having a neutral place to meet and have the hearings. Because, as you know, victims, they didn't ask for the crime, but they are collateral damage due to the crime, and we want to mitigate some of those challenges and fears that they have coming to either the Guam Police Department or the Corrections, of course, the Department of Corrections, or even some of the courts have offered graciously offered. But again, it's still a reminder of the incident or the event, and again, to lessen that, those fears and challenges and trauma. We really would like to just remain on neutral ground, and we thank the Department of Education for allowing us to be at OnToOn for a couple of years. We're now over at Parks and Rec's Northern Complex in their little small conference room, and now we're also Skyping with DOC, so we don't get a lot of, we don't get the inmates, we just see them. Even that is kind of difficult, because the technology is not as good as it could be. So there are those challenges that exist, but yeah, it works, you know. And so I believe we have been working, and I say "we," the parole services, the chief has spoken with Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, on regards to one of your buildings in Hagana that you guys have preview over. It's the building right across GPD. I understand the DOE is going to be moving out, and we're trying to rally to see if we can have that building, that space, to be able to have our hearings and parole services to be in there, to be able to operate on a daily basis. It's a neutral place. Of course, we don't have any funding, so we're asking for free rent. Of course, what we would do, what the intent was, was to be able to have the parolees under parole officer supervision, to be able to maintain that facility, and kind of try to keep the homeless population at bay, not coming onto the premises, and of course, try to work and fix it up as best as we can with whatever resources we can network with to be able to do that. So we kind of have spoken again, the chief has spoken, and I'm supposed to follow up with Madam Speaker and Ed Pocagui about that. In that, and of course, that will hopefully, we can get that for, I'm hoping at least five years, and we can hopefully improve the services of the parole division to our clients. The other thing that the parole, that I really, what I'm working on now, is that there is some National Institute of Corrections training for parole board members, as well as for a chair. That's upcoming in the summer and I think the fall, and it's free, everything is free. We just need to be able to say who can go and who, and attend this training. I've already spoken to one of the leaders there, and they have said that they would love all of us to come, but again, it's depending on our availability to be able to go. So I'd like to bring that to the table, so that we can continue. We don't have training. Everything we do here is by passing on the trauma way, passing on the experience down to, and on the job training, passing down on our knowledge and skills and abilities to our members. So we've shared that, but I think that we can always use some improvement with our education and training. So whether or not I confirm, I would still like to see the parole members go into that training. But of course, I would like to do that training too, so that we can continue to improve upon our services to our community. What Ms. Margaret was talking about is how we bring the two opposites together. Is Rory Respecho asked us a couple of years ago, I forget which hearing it was at, he asked us to move into restorative justice. So there are times in our hearings that, of course, restorative justice works better when both parties are willing to be able to talk and communicate. So there are times in our hearings that we facilitate that opportunity for both the offender and their victim, or their victim's families, to kind of come together and kind of bring some closure or some kind of healing process that needs to occur on both sides. I don't think everybody, most people really intend to, you know, commit crimes. Sometimes it just happens, sometimes they are premeditated. But in any case, we work at trying to do that restorative justice process in-house, whenever, and as we need. And then also, if we see it as the parole board orders, if we need to ask the families, we have asked the families, that if they can afford to do the enema program, that if they can do that, then we really encourage that. Again, if they need, if we see that they need it, because it's a long process, and the parolees, they really need help, they don't, some of them don't have the familial support that some of them have, and so it's a service gap that we have in our community that the Guam Aftercare, and there are other small partners in the community that do help with this population. But anyway, in either case, we really just try to work together to, you know, improve our community, and I would just be glad and humbled to be able to continue to serve. Thank you for the opportunity to do that in the last four years, and I again ask if you, with your blessings, that I would be honored to serve again for the next four years. Thank you so much.
Before I say anything else, first, I want to thank you for your last six years that you've given to the parole board, and in listening to... you've given to the parole board and in listening to the programs that you've instituted, I have to commend you that it, it's imperative that we make sure that they succeed because there's no sense in having a parole board that releases them only to have them come back in again and we make no effort to, to try to assist them in stabilizing, um, and even better, moving forward.
Yes.
And, um, you've mentioned that you've, you've spoken to the director or the chief?
[laughing]
Uh, is that the chief parole officer?
Yes.
Okay, I, I was just wondering, in the six years it's been, been there, ha- have they ever requested or asked the parole board to submit a budget that they might need to be able to fulfill their mission?
Not to my knowledge and not since I've been chairperson.
Okay. Um, at the risk of overextending myself, um...
I would love to submit a budget.
Yeah, I, i- if you would, I think it's imperative because we're talking about trying to figure out what to do about the overcrowding up there and if the parole could be a little more successful and if we could...
Yes.
...parole some of them, especially the ones that are running us up a huge hospital bill up there, or some other things that we can do in, in addressing the parole needs. Um, submit it. I, I, I hesitate to say submit it directly to me, but just so that I'm sure Adalou's watching, uh, I have asked for it and, uh, um, I don't know if you're going to need to clear it with them before it is sent to me, but I'm asking as the chairman that you submit a, a, a budget that you believe that would be necessary for you to implement the kinds of programs and, and break down the programs that, that you're, that you would like to see implemented, uh, out of the parole board, because at least it sounds like your GED program, your com- your, uh, communications program...
Partner, right.
Your resume writing, I mean, those are all, are all positive things and if there's any way that we can assist in doing that, um, but, uh, submit it because it's, everybody's been talking about we need to address public safety first and if we can address this, I'd like to be able to, um, from the committee, submit a, a, a budget requesting to assist the parole board in, in their efforts. The, um, I'm not sure you want that building.
Well, that's what Governor was talking about too. "You don't want that building." And I said, "Sir, we don't have anything."
No, I know, but I mean, really, th- if there's someplace else that we can work or something else that we can work out in your budget to find someplace where it wouldn't take all that effort to, it, the, it's, it's frightening. I, I really don't. I'm surprised OSHA hasn't sent everybody out of the building at, at the present time. But the thing is, is that, uh, at least for myself, um, as chairman of this committee, I would, I would welcome a, a, a recommendation on how you'd be able to address that.
All right.
Um, the mayor also made mention of, um, an amendment to the laws that relates to that one provision. If you would like to, on, for yourself as chair or with the, the concurrence of the board, submit a request that that be addressed, uh, we, you know, we, we could look at that. Um, currently, how many members are, have we confirmed?
Five.
When we confirm you later on next month, how many?
Oh, thank you.
It's not if, it's when.
I know.
You're not getting off.
I'll be glad to serve. I'll be glad to serve, sir.
Okay, but, uh, how, how many vacancies will we have then?
Um, we, we currently have two. I understand we're processing one through, we actually had six, but, um, Mr. Gorin Duinas, um, had some health, uh, problems and he just didn't show up for the meetings and we, you know, when your health is in wa- I believe that's what it was. And I, I talked to him a few times and that's, he, he just kind of said, "Well, Michelle, you know, I'll do what you want." And I said, "Well, sir, you know, you need to take care of your health" and so, um, he, he didn't come. So, you know, we just kind of kept praying that, uh, there would be others. But we continue, we have five, but as in this last case, Ms. Connie had to go off island and one of the members was sick. So then we were down to three. The old law allowed us to run with three and operate with three, which we did that for years. I mean, we, we didn't have a problem with that. So yes, we do have ideas, um, on those amendments and we would be glad to make our suggestions and maybe just the verbiage, I mean, just to get it to where it's, it's more, um, amenable...
But it is a seven-member board.
It is currently a seven-member board with...
With, with...
Four as a quorum.
Four as a quorum, but with you, it would make five confirmed, which means we have two vacancies.
Correct.
And, um, do you know when and if those are going to be filled soon?
Uh, well, I believe one is pr- could be processing now. I think it's in, uh, at Adalou being reviewed, so that's one.
Please tell Adalou that in spite of what, the mistake of this one, I will move them as quickly as I can. I, I did the last time when you told me you guys needed help, we, we moved, um, them as quickly as we could and we will continue to do that. And so if you would, um, try to get me some names, I'm the committee's name, so we will try to process them as quickly as possible. Um, are there any outstanding rules or procedures that you guys were supposed to have implemented, um, as a board? Were there supposed to, was there supposed to be a procedure on how to deal with conflicts between the parole board and, and the parolees?
Procedures?
No.
Um, no, other than, um, that's...
Okay, becau- yeah, no, there's all kinds of things.
Right.
I'm ju- and, um, there was, there was question as to whether or not the parole board had es- had implemented or, um, established a, a standard operating procedure in how to deal with conflicts between board members and, and parolees and if that was in place and how, a- a- and if it's not, was, was there supposed to be rules on, on that and in a...
Well, we have a, we have policies and procedures, pretty much just for operations. Um, uh, usually if a parolee has an issue, uh, with, if they come before us, whether it's rev- revica- it's usually the revocation site, um, and that we, in, in, as part of the documents, uh, the official document, it is asked, it does state that, "Do you have a problem with any of the members?" And if they do at that point, then they can s- state their, their reason and then if the parole board, um, decides, it's still up to, uh, it's at the discretion of the parole board because, um, if we don't have a quorum or if we're short, if, if one recuses themselves because of their, there could be a, a conflict, then, um, we may not have a quorum. So that's one issue. The other thing is, you know, we're, yeah, gosh, we're pretty objective, uh, you know, I even told my mom, "Mom, if you go through that system and I'm on the parole board, I'm gonna treat you like everybody else. Love you." She just laughed. But, um, there have been times, so, so as far as policies and even if you're, if, if the inmates come up for their desirability hearing, which are the other, um, when they're currently inmates and they come before us the first time, second or third time, they can at that point also address, um, that they are not comfortable or they have a problem with one of us. Um, that's kind of rare, but you know, I, I believe that we're very reasonable and if there is a problem, then we will try to, uh, find out what the problem is and then try to work with that, finding a solution if it needs, that somebody needs to recuse themselves. And we've had a couple of times where a coupl- uh, I think two times it's since I've been serving that, um, a, a board member recused themselves and it was okay. So, um...
But that would affect the quorum and the decision. I mean, the person may be cutting off their nose despite their face by saying, "You need to step off," and then that would mean there'd be no quorum.
That's correct.
And nothing could happen to, no decision could be made on that person. But you don't have anything in write- there, there's no standard procedure?
Well, the standard procedure, again, for the revocation is, if that's standard...
That's it?
Uh-huh. And again, um, i- I don't believe it's written, but I, we could amend our policies and procedures to say that if, at any time, uh, put it in writing, um, that if somebody, uh, if an inmate comes before the parole board or, or even before, that they, if they have an issue with us, any one of the members, that they can share their sentiments and then we can manage it from there.
Okay, yeah, and, and maybe even in those rules, it should be clear and, and the parolees should be made aware of it by removing one person.
Right.
It could mean that your, your, your case may not be heard at all, so...
Heard, that, that, that's right.
Uh, they should, they should be aware of that. But whatever, if there's anything, I was just asked that question and I just wanted to get that on the record as, uh, the one issue that I have, but, uh, the programs that you've been describing, I think are commendable because it is imperative that if, if the parole bor- parole is to ma- make any sense, is, we've got to do something to make sure that they succeed, otherwise now that would be the fastest revolving door if we, if there was no effort made to try to do the aftercare.
Right.
And the other thing is, um, you said that maybe the aftercare program at one time might have been a, an established program within parole.
Yes.
Um, if you can check to see whether or not that isn't, I, I, I admit that I don't...
I, I know there was talk about it, uh, Chiefs and they were, when they were at Tizen, um, they were at Tizen for a while, uh, maybe a few years. Ms. Connie, do you remember that? That, um, the...
It might have been about twenty years ago. Yep, so I remember when they were at Tizen, right after it was turned over, so...
Yeah, so maybe, I, I just know that they were there, they had...
The, the thing is, in a completely separate letter besides the, the, the budget, um, uh, request, um, if you could just do a narrative of the aftercare pro- program that you would like to, to recommend and see implemented and what that, what that would, what that would cost and, or, or entail, um, I know I've given you a lot of homework today.
That's okay, but you know, I just, it's, you know, I'm seeing budget and resources.
No, I, I understand, and...
We have three parole officers, two hundred and fifty...
And, and I'm just saying, and I...
Four parole officers, yeah.
I'm saying that I'm asking you if, un- unless they prohibit you from doing it downtown, I'm asking you to submit a, a budget request to us on what would address that, because I believe that it's necessary in order to reduce the population that we address and parole some of those out and if there's a way that we can work that, um, for less than what it is a hundred and whatever dollars a day...
Hundred, right.
Uh, we'd, I, I would think that we're ahead.
Yes.
That's me.
Well, no, I agree, be- because it's a hundred, because when they're on parole for the three years or their remaining sentence, um, that's on the family and the parolee to, to sustain themselves, you know, and, and we do utilize the parolees, do utilize some of the government, um, services that are out there, um, the food stamp program. Um, unfortunately, they can't utilize currently, um, I think someone is working on it housing with Gura, but, um, it's, d- it definitely helps. It's better than, you know, that's three years that they have to take care of themselves financially and three years that DOC doesn't have to spend a hundred dollars a day on them currently.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Titanow, I, in view of the, the information that Mayor Blas, um, provided about, um, the prohibition, I guess, for an elected official to be on the board, uh, I know that you've, in the past couple of elections, uh, did run for office and I just want to know, now, are you going to be running for office this coming election?
I have intentions, sir.
You have intentions, too, so, so your, your tenure on the board could be short-lived.
Yes, sir.
I see.
Could be. It depends on God and the people.
I mean, you always, you enter the race, you enter the race expecting, uh, you know, with a positive attitude that you are gonna get elected. Um, so, so then, I, I mean, that's good to know. And I just wanted to know that then, whether we have you for the four-year haul or maybe for six months?
Well, either case, sir, I always work hard over and above. I don't get paid for it, but...
No, I, I have, I don't, I don't doubt your dedication to the work, uh, and then on top of that, uh, may, maybe we need to take a look at the law. Once you file in on July first, does that then take you off?
I, I believe from what I understand, it's, um, it's when you, when you are, when you are elected and then I guess it's, it's that pros- sworn in. Sworn in. That's when, that's when Ms. Margaret stepped off, was after she was sworn in.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I think the, all the questions have been asked and, and the accolades for the programs that, uh, you've been a part of, so I just wanted to put on the record certainly my support and thank you, uh, for your, your service. This has got to be one of the more thankless things to do within the government, so obviously it shows, um, your true, uh, attitude toward service and the fact that you take it serious and, and once again, from, from myself and, and from the body, I'm sure, uh, once again a big, uh, Sitzungsmasse and you certainly, most definitely have my vote. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Chris.
Unless you have any closing comments, uh...
Um, I, uh, is there a deadline for these? Because you know I still don't have a...
When, when you get around to it and I, I know that...
Okay, soon.
Okay, yeah, please.
Right, okay. I'll, I'll do my best. I'll let Adalou know that I'll be working on this and we'll get it to you soon.
Okay.
Okay, otherwise, thank you.
And again, uh, thank you very much for your service and, uh, this, the confirmation of Ms. Michelle Hope Titanow is deemed heard and this committee will stand adjourned.
Okay, thank you.